...workshop to order and welcome all of this joyous crowd that was very tumultuous before we got started and you got silent really fast, so thank you. We're going to begin with the Pledge of Allegiance and we would be honored if Mayor Shelley Hasselbrink would honor us with leading the pledge.
Thank you very much. It would be my honor to lead us on the Pledge of Allegiance to honor our flag and our country that we are so blessed to live in a place where we can all be together despite our differences and come together as Americans and just the love of our country. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mayor Hasselbrink. Well done. So now we would like to begin with a roll call. Mrs. D'Angelo.
Mrs. Patasani, here. Mrs. Hill, here. Mrs. Davidson, here. Mr. Forehand, here. Mr. Bragman, here.
Thank you very much. I need a motion to adopt our agenda.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The motion carries 5-0. Okay, at this point, we move into our workshop and recognition, so I would like to begin with recognition of professional development cohorts with Mrs. Reed.
Thank you so much, President Davidson. It really is just a great night as we're able to recognize both our exemplary and distinguished educators tonight. So our exemplary educators are those teachers who have just completed their five-year professional development cohort with us. And for people who aren't education, they might think that's just your five years in a job, but it really is so much more. So many of our teachers go through a very rigorous hiring process to even get a job here. An elementary teacher in our district probably lined up at 5:00 or 6:00 in the morning to have their applications be one of the first 100 or 150 that we're seeing, went through a speed dating interview, did a panel interview, and maybe came back for two demonstration lessons before actually being hired on. And then all of our teachers, K-12, really enter into a five-year professional development plan, which includes not only being out of the classroom for professional learning and training, but also having in-classroom coaching, attending monthly new teacher models, and following up with their administrator, who traditionally hosts monthly new teacher meets to really check up on, making sure they have a team that they're calibrating their practice with. And so it really is a five-year journey. Something great about it is that our teachers really form some unique relationships across school sites. And so I think when you're a small district like Los Alamos, something that's really special and unique is we have six elementary schools, two middle schools, and one high school. And these days out with your year-one cohort, your year-two cohort, really do form bonds and friendships and a really natural place to collaborate and share best practices across school sites. And so although it's a lot of time and a lot of expectations, many of our teachers are a little sad when their five-year journey comes to an end because they've formed these unique friendships with teachers across other school sites who they won't have these days out of the classroom with or opportunities to demonstrate lessons inside their classroom. And so I really want to give a thank you to the other people on my team who make this work happen. Melissa Davis, our Director of Assessment and Accountability; Dr. Dan Bennett, our Education Technology Coordinator, as well as three TOSAs who serve on our team; Evan Grandin, our literacy trainer and coach; Jill Cruz, our CGI math trainer and coach, as well as Laura Trotter, who's been overseeing our positive learning communities, doing training and coaching in our K-8 classrooms. And then a shout-out to Ms. Erin Reese at the high school as well. She's been a continuance of the work that Laura has been doing on the high school campus with nine, 12 teachers in terms of looking at positive communities. And so I'm going to go ahead and get started, and we're first going to have our five-year PD teachers come up to the front. Mrs. Davis will hand you your blue jacket, and if you could come up to the front of the dais, that would be great. Mrs. Porchardo will get a picture of everyone when this cohort is completed. So our first recipient is Ms. Caitlin Alvarado from McGaw Elementary School. Mr. David Anderson, music teacher at both Rossmore and Weaver Elementary School. Nicola Bissard from Los Alamitos Elementary School. Mr. Mark Caati, Los Alamitos High School, Special Education. Marissa Chavez, McGaw Elementary School. Maya Dianda, Los Alamitos High School, English. Kylie Donaldson, Lee Elementary School. Tyler Fenton, Los Alamitos High School, Physical Education. Chelsea Cacalia, Los Alamitos High School, Visual Art. Rosanna Lee, Rossmore Elementary School. Taylor Martin, McGaw Elementary School. Matthew Middo, Los Alamitos High School, Special Education. Michio Ross, Los Alamitos Elementary School. Mary Ann Russell, Los Alamitos High School, English. Sunny Takahashi, Lee Elementary School. We're going to go ahead and give these teachers just a last really warm welcome. I'm going to go back to the right slide that has their title on it. Perfect, thank you so much. So when we started these blue jackets to really recognize the five-year PD model that our new teachers were in, we had a lot of veteran teachers reach out after some time to say, hey, I've been involved in professional learning, engaged in signature practice of the district for many years. I'd love an opportunity to earn that same blue jacket. And so a couple of years ago, we formalized a process by which to recognize those veteran teachers or distinguished educators that consistently show up for professional learning, participate in our committees, and really land their expertise regardless of the situation we're in. And so I'd like to now recognize those distinguished educators and have them join us. Melissa, we'll give you your jacket, and if you could come to the front as well, we'd love to get your picture. Angela Acuna, McCullough Middle School, English Language Arts. Dr. Joseph Arias, McGaw Elementary School. Kristi Bagby, Los Alamitos Elementary School. Angie Hawes, Hopkinson Elementary School. Dr. Amanda Lozoya, Oak Middle School, Special Education. Nicole Manley, McCullough Middle School, Special Education. Laura McDermid, Oak Middle School, Mathematics and Social Science. Mary McDougall, Los Alamitos Elementary School. Leslie Obert, McGaw Elementary School. Dani Phillips, McCullough Middle School, English Language Arts. Damian Smith, Los Alamitos High School, Special Education. Tina Sudo, Los Alamitos Elementary School. Dr. Dariel Tom, Weaver Elementary School. Peggy Wilkins, Rossmore Elementary School. You're welcome. Let's give them the last warm, warm applause. Perfect, thank you so much.
Thank you, Mrs. Reed, and thank you to all of you who've been so dedicated to the special practices and staff development. We are now, are there other comments? No, okay. We're now moving on to recognition of our aspiring leaders. Dr. Wiestreit.
Thank you, Madam President. Good evening to our Board of Education, to our Los Alamos community. I am super excited to recognize some of our aspiring leaders. Some people are going home with multiple sets of swag. Very exciting. So if you don't know, aspiring leaders really is a new initiative in the district that's really aimed at developing our certificated educators into, not necessarily leadership positions, but helping with their professional growth and development as they look to improve as leaders and then potentially move into leadership roles within our district. And so we started last year with a vision of it being a one-year program. It expanded to be two years, and we had 23 participants representing all levels, elementary, middle school, and high school. It ended up being a two-year program with 17 different structured sessions. Huge thank you to our administrative team because Executive Cabinet, Cabinet, our principals, our assistant principals, all participated at some point or another in helping guide discussions, in lead different sessions, in meeting with our aspiring leaders. Part of the work that they were able to do over the last two years involved shadow days where our participants were able to shadow current administrator, either mostly at the school site level, but some at the district level as well. And then our aspiring leaders also had to complete a leadership initiative, and so that was something that they spearheaded. And that ranged from creating a manual for our instructional aids in special education all the way up to developing better systems for instructional networking at our middle school sites. So we're really, really proud of them. We're really proud of all the work that they have done. We are also sad to see it come to an end, as this was our inaugural cohort going through this work, and we're pleased to be able to recognize them tonight. So we're doing three on a slide, so come on up as I call you. We have Tricia Costa. Michelle Anderson. And Jenny Bain. Jessica Barr, go on up. Nathan Berger. Anne Marie Bergeron. Carrie Beth Ethelson. Tina Heron. Jerelyn Kuhar. Lauren Lavash. Emily Letterman. Sarah Lee. Nicole Manley. Matthew Maya. Christine Morris. Adrian Reynolds. Stacy Schmitz. Tanya Simunza. Dariel Tom. Tracy Wallace. And Nicole Walters. And can we just thank Nicole Browning, who put all this together for us? Thank you.
Show off your swag.
Show off your swag.
You don't have to wear it, you don't.
And then in your gift bags, in your gift bags, there's no socks. I tried to mislead you so much at what your swag would be. But our very first session, they go through their core values, and so I stole the design from Cara Vienna, thank you, Cara. But in your bag is your name and your two core values from when we started, two years ago. So congratulations. Do you want me to change the slide? Congratulations. So much swag for you.
I know, that's what I'm coming from.
Yeah, absolutely.
Dariel, they want you to picture with Bronn as well.
Sorry, sorry, sorry. I'm like, dude, got my jacket.
Congratulations, and thank you for all the hard work you did to become even greater leaders in our community. Now we are going to rec- Oh, okay, sorry. Oh, you want me to give? So mean. So now we would like to recognize five community advisory award recipients, and I would like Mrs. Grace Delk to please come up and share with us.
Absolutely. Oh, wow. She's like dropping. Sorry, the microphone's moving weird, but it's interesting. Sideways, oh, it's okay. Okay, so good evening, Madam President, esteemed board members, Dr. Pulver, Executive Cabinet, and all of the community that's here. I'm super fortunate to be able to recognize our 2025 CAC Award recipients. So before I jump in, I just wanted to give a little context about what the CAC is and also the SELPA. So we are part of the Greater Anaheim SELPA, which consists of six school districts. And really what the SELPA stands for is the Special Education Local Plan Area. And so it's an organization that really brings together resources to support students with special needs and ensure that appropriate supports are given and also that we're in compliance with all of the laws. So we are part of the Greater Anaheim SELPA, as I mentioned. And then the CAC is really composed of parents who make up all of our member districts. So I believe at this current time, Los Alamitos has two parents that serve on the CAC Committee. And so their primary purpose really is to facilitate communication and understanding to really lead to improved outcomes for all of our students. So without further ado, the CAC wishes to acknowledge, as well as Los Alamitos, the award recipients who've really gone above and beyond to support our students with special needs. And so these individuals were nominated not only by parents, but staff members, community members, for the contributions of whether it's academic, social, emotional, or even, you know, all different kinds of areas you'll see in our awards. So go ahead and start. So when I call your name, please come up. So Sarah Lee. So I am going to- Come on over. I am going to share a little bit about each one of the recognition forms. So Sarah Lee, you can stand right here, that's fine, is an education specialist at Hopkinson Elementary School. She's been an integral part of our district for the past seven years, and she serves supporting our multi-age Husky classroom. So just a little bit from her nomination, she consistently goes above and beyond for my daughter. We've seen tremendous growth and progress in our daughter's overall learning and development. We love Sarah's confidence-building approach to teaching as it has shown us what our daughter is capable of. This has given our family the hope we need that the future can be a bright one. Sarah communicates progress, updates, and concerns with pictures and videos. My daughter, in all caps, loves going to school because of the fun and positive environment that Sarah has built. Sarah is an asset to the school and the community. So congratulations, Sarah. This is the order. Yay. You ought to stand up there. Perfect. Our next recipient is Matt McDonald. He is not here in person, but we're still going to share about him, so he's- We don't know. So Matt is the custodian at Hopkinson Elementary School, and he's been a dedicated employee with us for the past 15 years. So here's a little bit about his nomination. So Mr. Matt often hears a knock at the door, and not likely to his surprise, he finds me on the other side asking for help or to borrow some sort of tool. He unfailingly stops what he's doing to assist me in adjusting a student's adaptive bike, standing frame, or unloading my truck full of large pieces of equipment. I'm deeply grateful for his consistent assistance and unwavering willingness to work as a team to ensure our students have well-working and correct-sized equipment. Mr. Matt is truly worthy of winning the CAC Recognition Award because he consistently goes above and beyond his duties, he plays a crucial role in helping create a clean and safe learning environment for students with disabilities, his dedication and helpfulness significantly contribute to the students' well-being and the smooth operation of our program. So congratulations to Matt. One of our physical therapists at the SELPA. Yes. Perfect. All right, so our next nomination is two individuals I'm going to call up together, so Amelda Hernandez and Karina Vilches. Perfect. You can come over here. Perfect. So both Amelda and Karina work in our Food Services Department at Rossmore Elementary School. Amelda has- So Amelda has worked in the district for 15 years, and Karina's been supporting Los Alamos for the last 17 years. Ms. Hernandez and Ms. Vilches are the food service- Oh, I already said that about elementary. The students, they are supporting the students in our adult transition program, and they're given the opportunity to work in the cafeteria to gain job skills that prepare them for life after ATP. Amelda and Karina welcome the ATP students with a friendly enthusiasm. They are kind and patient as the ATP students learn from them and as they prepare lunch for the Rossmore students. How special is that? Thank you, Ms. Hernandez and Ms. Vilches, for always greeting the ATP workers with smiles and encouragement. Your support for our special adults is so crucial to their development. Congratulations. But she's willing to let us work. Okay, you guys can stand up there, so Sarah's not all by herself. And last, but certainly not least, we'd like to bring up Emeline Noda. So Emeline is the Director of Recreation and Community Services for the city of Los Alamitos, and we'll just read a little bit about her award. I had the opportunity to work with Emeline, which was amazing. Her exceptional dedication to creating impactful programs for children's with disabilities within the Los Alamitos Unified School District is truly outstanding. As a key partner with the city, she successfully fostered an inclusive environment, enabling children to thrive and fully participate in extracurricular activities. Through the development of the Adaptive Recreation Program and the PALS for Los Alamos event that we were fortunate enough to host this year in the fall, she's ensured tailored programs meet the needs of these children. Her effective leadership, united community resources, educators, and students creating empowering opportunities for growth. Emeline's unwavering compassion and vision have set a new standard for service and advocacy, leaving a lasting and positive impact on the schools and the families they serve. Congratulations, Emeline. And before we wrap up, I just wanted to thank the whole city of Los Alamitos for a lot of them are here tonight, and also just for partnering with the school district to create such a meaningful event for all of our students. It really was truly impactful, and we look forward to next year. So thank you so much.
Now we are going to move on to every school gets to pick a hero of the heart. We, as a district, get to pick a hero of the heart. So Dr. Pulver, would you like to do this presentation?
I would, but I would need your assistance, Madam President. And just to make sure to keep me on script, I actually wrote it out tonight because I know that it was, A, time-sensitive, and there's so many wonderful things that I want to say about this individual or organization, about who we're recognizing. And so as a school district, all of our schools get to recognize one individual each year as their school hero of the heart. And then in May, as a district, we come together to recognize our district hero of the heart. And it's someone who selfless dedication, unwavering kindness, and extraordinary service leads a lasting impact on students, on staff, and schools. And I'm so glad and thrilled that there are so many people here to be able to help us recognize this individual. And so this year's recipient embodies all of that and so much more. It is our great honor to be able to recognize Mr. Chris Forehand as our 2025 Hero of the Heart. We got you. We got you. Come on up.
Wow, what a surprise.
You're not going to be needing that.
Yeah, we have a different medal. We have a different medal for you. So his family's been hiding out in the back since 4:00, so thank you for allowing us to surprise Chris. Yes, we have a few awards for him. Thank you for an odds.
Have him hold this and be uncomfortable.
I will, thank you.
Ms. Davidson, maybe it's time for the medal as well. Would you like to give him his medal?
Okay, Chris, we had to outdo you, so this medal is going to be a gigantic heart.
And it says MVP. You know, there were a few options on Amazon. It was like champion or golf. Well, I think it's most valuable pop-up. See? Yeah. All right, Chris, I've got a lot of things to still share on behalf of the entire board and district. While many know Chris as a dedicated and engaged member of our Board of Education, what truly sets him apart is everything he does beyond the board. Chris lives and breathes this district. He doesn't just serve on the board, he serves every corner of our community. Woo, sorry, Chris. Week in and week out with humility, joy, and heart. He spends his mornings reading to preschoolers, his afternoons helping serve lunch in the cafeteria, his weekends planning art lessons with popsicle sticks and watercolors for elementary schools. He volunteers at school events, attends performances, and cheers on our students, always from the front row. And if that wasn't enough, he writes so many notes. Each week, Chris writes 75 to 150, in some weeks there's probably more, handwritten letters to staff and to students. They're decorated with stickers, and sometimes you get a special pencil or other. He recognizes birthdays- He recognizes birthdays, classroom highlights, accomplishments, and moments that really matter, talking about adding heart to the district. He reads every school's newsletter over the weekend and somehow finds all the different individuals who he needs to write a letter to or to acknowledge in some fine way. And let's not forget that this individual, this young man, loves to shop. But, you know, he is a not-so-secret relationship with Amazon, where he spends his own money, probably spends way more than what he earns as a board member, the pithens that they get as a stipend, to buy stickers, pencils, these beautiful medals, and fun little items that he can hand out to students and staff. And he doesn't do it for recognition or praise. He does it because he believes in the small acts of kindness to build connection, inspire joy, and remind others that they matter. Chris's love for this district runs deep. It's in the way that he shows up. And I often say the best gift we can give is the presence of our time and the gift of ourselves, and that is something he gives so freely and selfishly. He encourages others the way that he gives of his time and his heart without any hesitation. He's not doing this work for applause, even though he deserves plenty. He's doing it because he believes in public education. He believes in our students, he believes in our staff, and he believes in our mission. And he shows us each and every single day what it means to be extraordinary. Chris, your service is a gift to this district. Your heart is woven into every classroom, every hallway, every note, every medal, and every smile you bring to others. On behalf of the board, our district leadership, and our school sites, this entire USD family, it's with immense gratitude and admiration that we honor you as our 2025 District Hero of the Heart. Chris, every note you write, every medal you hand out, every art lesson you teach, every lunch tray you serve, you pour your heart into the district. You make our students feel seen, our staff feel appreciated, and our families feel connected. You remind us that kindness, presence, and joy matter, and that's what makes Los Alamos so special. Congratulations, you are our Hero of the Heart.
I've been in this business for 40... A long time, right? Peggy will verify that. We've been together for a long time. Anyway, and this is probably, if not the best, honor because you all work so hard, you all give so much, that it makes it easy to come back and visit with your kids. And I appreciate you sharing them all with me because every day it's the highlight. So thank you very much. Well, fortunately, my daughter-in-law, who teaches at Lee, is taking grandson number one to the doctor, which is priority right now. But I also have grandson number two. Liam's a fifth grader, moving on to Oak next year. So be ready. I've warned Oak to be ready. We got him, okay? And that's my son Joey, who's a middle school teacher as well. Oh, Anna Losalgrad. He went to Rossmore, McCullough, and to the high school. So we've been here quite a while. So thank you for coming tonight. That was very nice.